Good evening, everybody. We're here for a public meeting of ZBA. Can you hear me in back?
No, I can't hear you.
I think the closer be like, but it's more just to pick us up.
Yeah. If you could all turn off your cell phones, that'd be nice. And then let's stand with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to preface this meeting, I imagine there's going to be a lot of energy here. If you put your name on a paper and set it up here, you'll get your five minutes to talk. We're going to be civil. Nobody's going to come in and interrupt. No talking over each other, otherwise you'll be asked to leave. I know that's not going to happen, so we'll conduct ourselves that way. Thank you. Okay. Code call. All right, Mazur?
Here.
Powers?
Yeah.
Brewster?
I'm here.
Hoolin?
Here.
Henley?
Here.
Carver?
Here.
Stonebarr?
Here.
All present.
All present. Keeler? Adoption of the meetings of the May 28th and June?
Adoption or amendment of the agenda.
The agenda.
I motion that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. Approval of May 28th?
We need to vote on that.
What's that? Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries.
My bad.
Asked for all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Carries?
Approval of May 28th and July 8th meeting minutes.
I motion that we approve the meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good. Any public comment on the last two meetings? Okay. All right. As I said, we're going to open this up for new business. It's a public hearing. Statewide is going to ask for variances. Present your application and state your case. After they are done, we will have the citizens give their input. Like I said, let's be courteous to each other, and you get five minutes. We'll be timed, so thank you. So statewide, would you please give us your application and state your case?
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is John Eady. I'm the attorney for the applicant statewide Memphis LLC. With me today on behalf of statewide Memphis are the owners of statewide Memphis, Michael Demille, to my right, and Marcus Kiba, to my left. We want to thank the board for its time this evening. We recognize that you do not meet regularly, and we appreciate you taking your time to consider our petition. I'd like to start with the procedural history of the project. Statewide Memphis purchased fifteen and a half acres at the corner of Pratt Road and Bell River Road, right across the street here in 2020. At that time, the owners had a formal meeting with Larry Wilson and Mark Dunsmore about developing the property. During that meeting, it was learned that affordable housing was a major need in Memphis. There had not been a new permit built, uh, new build permit, excuse me, in 15 years, and that schools desperately needed students. February 2021, the developer of the city held a planning meeting, in which four members of the city and four members of the developer met, and a development plan was discussed in depth. It was determined that the development would be going forward in two phases. One, single-family homes along Bell River Road and Pratt Road. And phase two, the multifamily development in back. It was determined that because of the lack of movement in the past, that the single-family homes would be developed first as a proof of concept, and the multifamily second. Now, phase one is essentially complete. Phase two started to gain momentum in May of 2023. Public hearing was held in this very, this very room, in which we re-zoned the property from R1A to RM, multifamily. That meeting went from potentially contentious to amenable when it was discovered that the developer intended to put multifamily condos on the site rather than apartments. You'll see some comments in your, there's a summary of the, of the project in your packet, and this is what it is holding. The comments of what people at the meeting was 100% positive. At that meeting, the planning commission approved the rezoning to RM, and then on June 6, 2023, the city council approved this one. In December of that year, the planning commission reviewed a concept plan, which was basically the same plan before you, with just some minor changes. That concept plan was approved by the planning commission, and again, by the city council. During 2024, the plan, the plan was put through engineering, and it was eventually approved by the city engineer. Now, in May of this past year, the final site plan went to the planning commission. We reviewed it and approved it conditionally with eight conditions attached. I'd like to talk about variances, because those conditions are going to, have been requested to be addressed through the variance process. Variances have been available in Michigan since the beginning of zoning laws. Today, this authority for variances is vested in zoning board, uh, of a, excuse me, zoning ordinance appeals, such as yourself, pursuant to the zoning enabling act of the state of Michigan. Supreme Court of Michigan has characterized variance process as a safety valve. In circumstances where strict application of a zoning ordinance would impose a hardship to a particular property not shared by others. The zoning enabling act permits variances, so the spirit of a zoning ordinance is preserved, public safety is secured, and substantial justice is done. It's found in MCL 125.36047. Now, there are two types of variances available. One is a use variance, and one is a non-use variance. All the variances we seek tonight are non-use, of the non-use variety. Those variances are permissible pursuant to MCL 125.13604, subsection 8. Relating to the construction, structural changes or alterations of buildings or structures related to the, to the dimensional requirement of the zoning ordinance or to any other non-use related standard of the way. Section 150.028 subsection 3 of the City of Memphis's zoning ordinance permits the granting of variances, including non-use variances. Standard for granting a non-use variance per the ordinance is quote-unquote "practical difficulty," which I'll get to in a moment. I would also refer the board to section 150.009F of the City of Memphis ordinances, which permits this body to modify yard regulations in multifamily development areas when regulations cannot reasonably, reasonably be complied with. Let's go back to practical difficulty. What is it? It's a term that's used in both the zoning enabling act and the City of Memphis's own zoning ordinance. Unfortunately, it's not defined either. The Michigan Court of Appeals has defined it using three factors. One, whether compliance with strict letter of the restriction would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose, or would render conformity with such restrictions unnecessarily burdensome. We believe all seven of our requests tonight fit that category. Two, whether a grant of a variance applied for would do substantial justice to the applicant, or would a lesser of the relaxation than applied for would give substantial relief to the owner. As we'll get into in a moment, the owner, after receiving the neat conditions, reviewed the plan, one of the conditions was addressed with a minor set plan modification. The other seven need to come through the variance process. Finally, three, whether relief can be granted in such a factor that the spirit of the ordinance will be observed, public safety and welfare secured. Again, we believe all of our requests fall under this category as well. It's been said by the Michigan Court of Appeals that the function of a board of zoning appeals is to protect the community against usable land remaining idle. Now, I'm going to respond to two specific items that may come up in opposition to these variances. One is whether relief, when relief cannot be granted if the condition is caused by the owner itself. This concept has been applied, but it's been narrowly implied by the Michigan courts, and I believe applies in this case. All the conditions stem here stem from the rezoning of the parcel in 2023. The rezoning is a legislative function of the government, city government, not the owner. And even though the owner may have requested the zoning, the owner does not have the power or the ability to rezon the property, it's the city. The condition of the application of, the condition, the application of the zoning requirements stems directly from the rezoning. And second, the site plan was always part of a larger development process. The developer worked with the city step by step to create a space where much-needed multifamily affordable housing could be located. Number two, whether the applicant's financial or personal status cannot be considered. And this statement has been out in sort of the social media world, and this is untrue. An applicant's financial consideration can very much be part of the analysis. It just cannot be the only factor. We cite financial need in our application, and specifically the need to maximize the allowable density as a factor because of the significant cost to bring infrastructure in a manner required by the city, to the site specifically. Sewer and water must come in and interlude and connect outside the site, and the road must be sufficient to allow emergency vehicles to the site flowing in and out. This is not the only factor we are asking for these variances. We seek to maximize density because dense zoning is very limited in the City of Memphis, and it benefits the city to maximize the limited areas where it is designated. Also, there are other considerations for each of these variances. Some of what I've said is included in the variance application. I'm repeating myself a little bit. But there are eight original conditions to the site plan approval, one of which I mentioned, the building envelope being too long, have been addressed with a minor site plan adjustment. Now, the first request we've asked for today has to do with rear setbacks. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to address all seven at once, and then. Now, the zoning ordinance requires a rear setback of 30 feet on each of the buildings. The proposed building envelopes 1 through 3, 7 through 8, and 12 through 16 do not meet the 30-foot setback. Now, each of those sites have conditions that would protect the nature of why you have a setback, a setback, and that is for the distance between buildings. 1 through 3, while only 20 and a half foot, is proposed back up to lots 1 through 5 of the Memphis Metals condominium. I'm sorry, that's going to be on your side right in front.
Which one, what, what's building one and what's building?
Oh, that's the property. That's the property. The buildings will be in front of you, yeah. 1, 2, 3 back up to, back up to numbers 1 through 5 of the single-family homes. Single-family homes were developed on the rear setbacks far in excess of 35 foot that's required under R1A, and when you take the two in conjunction, more than means the two setbacks combined. Buildings 7 through 8, while only 20, 22 foot, is proposed back up to a neighbor with a very significant rear setback. That, that is there, which has, has a long area between the building, the home there, and it will not be developed, cannot be developed back there because it would be a man lock lots, so there will always be a buffer there. Now, number 12, while only 25 foot is proposed, backs up to the proposed detention part. And you put the detention part with the setback of 46, 30 foot. And then envelopes 13 through 16, although less than 30 foot, back up to the schoolyard. So there's a buffer between the school and the homes, the hundreds of feet. So we ask either through the variance process or through the section 150, uh, 00, uh, 009F to grant a variance to allow these building envelopes not to have a 30-foot setback. Number two requires a front setback of 25 foot. There's some confusion at the planning commission about this requirement and how it was measured. There are two different ways in the RM zoning that this is measured. One, under a plan, it's measured from the front of the building to the curb. In that case, our, our buildings are 30 foot from the front of the building to the curb. In a condominium development, even though it's the exact same product and the exact same design, the measurement's from the front of the building to the sidewalk. In that case, this is 20 foot. It doesn't, it does not include the sidewalk and the greenbelt. But the actual physical distance between the front of the building and the curb is 30 feet, and would meet under the normal zone. So we would ask for a variance if this be allowed to be less than the condominium setback requirement of, I think it's 25 feet, because we believe the spirit of the design more than meets the need for the setback from the road. Number three requires side setbacks in buildings. These are large buildings, they are long buildings, and the ordinance requires that certain longer, large buildings, the longer they get, the more space they need between them. This is one where we're talking about financial issues. This is built with maximum, and also with maximum density available on the RM. If this variance is not allowed, buildings will have to be, be removed from the plan. At that point, you lose the density that would meet the density RM. You would also make this financial issue with losing buildings, it's losing costs, unable to build infrastructure. Again, it's a consideration, it's not the only consideration. The other consideration is the city has RM zoning in this place, and we want to maximize the use of the R1, RM zoning in this area. So we would ask for a variance from site setbacks requirement. Number four, is a variance for the, excuse me, number four is, is the variance that we have, we've addressed, and is going to take out of the request. Number five is the limit of the, the building height. The ordinance requires a limit of building height to 25 feet from the average ground level of the grade at the building's walls to the average height between eaves and ridge for the gable and hip or gimbal roofs. That's sort of beyond what I know because I'm not a builder. But I've talked to architects, we've talked to buildings, this is unusually low standard. There's a letter in your packet from our architect at the drawing room, Steve Kowski talks about neighborhood communities, which we have between 30 and 35. His, now, we've not actually done an architectural drawing, natural architect drawing for the building, but he did do, it's called an elevation, which is required under the ordinance to show the planning commission what would likely be there. And his drawing, his fourplex was 25 feet, 10 inches and 3, 10 and 3/8 inches, excuse me, height. And that's as low as you can get. And when you start doing the math, foot or two of subfloor, eight foot in the floor, couple feet in between, eight foot again, and then all of a sudden you're going up, you lose, you lose feet pretty quickly. We are asking for 20, I believe we're asking for a variance to 28 feet. I don't even know if we're going to use all that. What Mr. Demille is showing is a picture I developed through AI. One of those buildings is 25 feet, one of those is 28 feet. So it's a, they have a picture of it. The last three of our requests have to do with the roads. Number one has to do with a right-of-way, a 4A road. Number two, actually number six on the list, number seven on the list has to do with on-street parking, and number eight has to do with the actual road curve to go. We believe that this is incorrect, incorrect application of the zoning ordinance, but we also believe that there's a mistake, that this cannot be correct. Not have a 60-foot roadway in a multifamily development, and we'll show you why. Those, those are four roads that took off. The top one on the left is about, I think it's 60 foot, and that's Grashit Avenue and Hall Road. That's 60 foot. Next to it, I believe, is Grashit and New Haven, right after the highway. That's 56 foot. That's what the zoning ordinance requires with this subdivision, a road like that. The only place in Memphis where a road is anywhere near that size is downtown Main Street, where there's a turning lane. That's the only road in the city. The bottom road, the corner, is Bell River, is Bell River Road, where the development will begin, and that's 20 feet. So what we're asking for is a variance to allow 45-foot right-of-way in a 25-foot road. The speed in, in the development would be, would be either 15 or 20 miles an hour, regulated by the homeowners association. And then we also, as a requirement in a multifamily area with on-street parking, we ask that that be waived as well. One, our design team has provided adequate parking onsite, two-car garages, two-car driveways, and we believe that on-street parking just kind of gets in the way, like the public safety is in favor of no on-street parking as well. So those are the variances that we have requested today. For five years now, the developers have promised the city and its residents that it would do its best to complete a multifamily residential condominium development in this space. Plans before you is the best use of this space at the maximum allowable density. The developer has kept its promise. There are practical difficulties as demonstrated tonight, which require the seven variances that are before you in order to build this plan. The zoning enabling act permits variances, one, so the spirit of zoning ordinance is preserved. RM1 zoning, RM zoning is high-density multifamily zoning. That's what this developer is trying to put into this space. Two, public safety is secured. The wide roads are brutal. We would include speed limits, no on-street parking, it would be a safe environment. Three, substantial justice is done. The developers worked with this city for years to provide this much-needed product. We ask you to approve each of these seven variances to allow for the site plan to move to finality. Thank you very much.
And ask for motion to open this up for public hearing?
I motion that we open the meeting to a public hearing to allow citizens' comments regarding the multifamily condominium development.
Support.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, we're open. Okay, do you understand on the sheets right here? Again, be courteous to your neighbor. Everyone wants to be heard. We'll be timing you, five minutes. Thank you. I'd like to call Steve Weaver to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve Weaver, 34600 Pratt Road. Appreciate the opportunity to make a few comments here, and appreciate the chairman's comments that we got. Be civil. We all have our own opinions, many of them strong on this, but that doesn't mean we cannot treat each other with courtesy and respect, which I believe our team, Mr. Eady, Mark, and Mike. So the Memphis condominium ordinance is our law, as on our books. The City of Memphis and statewide are both mutually obligated to follow it. We have 13 new homeowners, we have a huge stake in the outcome of this upcoming process, as well as the immediate neighbors in our one-square-mile city. 68 apartments going into this area should be scrutinized. That's a good thing. We should be looking at it carefully, particularly since the builder is asking for eight variances. For decades, that area has been a single-family residential neighborhood. 68 units is going to destroy the fabric of that community. The density of 68 units, the attendant traffic, wear and tear on the already substandard roads in the area. And further, we have a bottleneck disaster in the morning and in the evening with school rush hours, dropping kids off and picking kids up. That's only going to get worse, and it's going to increase in the mortgage magnitude. These variances is, if granted, they violate our condominium ordinance on several fronts, but they run headlong into the mandates of our master plan also, which is what governs the philosophy of what a city is trying to do. One of the most important thing that I've learned about the history and creation of zoning law, which local communities control, they have control over their local zoning issues. You do not grant variances. The circumstance do so are most limited, as Mr. Eady made reference to, although we have a different take on it. And the zoning variances should be rare. Otherwise, why do you have zoning? If you start rezoning for every little thing that comes along the pipe, you destroy your codes. Broadly, there's two factors to consider granting a variance, and Mr. Eady alluded to them. You have like the size, your constraints of odd lots, or where the shade, they got ski banks, there's right-of-ways that go through it. Those are things that you couldn't really have much control on for granting a building or setback from things. And second is practical difficulties. If an owner can prove existing regulations cause hardship, it is paramount to know in these cases if the hardship was self-created. Harship arguments created by petitioners to ZBA board are self-made and are not grounds to grant a, of a variance. The builder knew zoning with property before he purchased it. I certainly expect they're, they were familiar with the existence of the condominium ordinance on our books in Memphis. They successfully requested a change in zoning from R1A to RM, multiple family. These Memphis condominium ordinances that are before us now, statewide seeks to change. Maybe ordinances were considered by statewide before the plans were submitted to Memphis, or maybe not, I don't know, but they were there. Regardless, that's a self-named problem, and therefore, that shouldn't garner any extra sympathy to grant variances on eight items in the condominium code of Memphis. Remedies entertained must not damage safety, property values, or deprive fellow property owners of the essential character of their neighborhoods. If granted, these variances will accomplish the very things these ordinance were put in place to protect. Statewide builders almost achieved their objective of compliance by the city council amending several of these condominiums not long ago, the height, length, and building setbacks. That would allow them to proceed at that point. Luckily, on the eve of changing those, the city council realized what they were going to do was illegal, and there was a different process that had to be followed. So now we're where we need to be. It should be before the zoning order of appeals, which is proper, and I'm very happy to see that evolving. Statewide has resubmitted their plans unchanged from the original ones they, they presented to the city, with full knowledge they're out of compliance. They want their variances granted. Is dangerous for any community to grant variances? Well, we know it. And I guess I'm out of time.
You had time, Steve.
But I have all the rest of the word comments, and I'll give you a copy of the other supporting documents I sent to the city before, but I want to make sure that the copies are under our record. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Steve. I called Terry Reese.
Reese.
Did I say it wrong?
Reese.
Reese.
My name is Terry Reese. I'm a 30-year, 70-year resident. I live at 81300 Bell River Road. First of all, we spent a lot of years putting a master plan in place, and the developer is trying to make it sound like there's not going to be any affordable housing in Memphis. What he fails to mention is that we do have an area that's owned from mobile homes, and it's not too far from where this development takes place. So while we're talking about 200 additional cars coming through an area with too little space already, he talks about uptown and the intersection, trucks have tipped over in that intersection before, so if we're talking about wide, fire trucks are pretty wide. I retired from the fire department. I've worked in engineering. I've worked in water, sewer, DPW, and planning for Clinton Township for 15 years. Developers come and go, and have to stay to be for it. They knew what the zoning was. In that state before, they knew what the zoning was. They barely complied with compliance for the 10 or whatever houses that they've already built. So let's talk density. A lot of people in the small area, we have lagoons, we don't belong to the Detroit water system, it's expensive. They brought it all the way up Grashit. Let's add the mobile home, and too many people in that area, we're dealing with traffic. But what about the sewage? We have lagoons. If you have overflows, the state starts checking, you know, checking out fines and everything. Can our lagoons handle it? Do we even have room to expand? Has anybody done any capacity studies or feasibility studies? And have they done so at their expense? Let's talk about the size of our pipes. I looked at some of the engineering plans that show the existing pipes that aren't big enough already, that the city is going to be saddled with heaven to put in place. We don't have the money for that. Yes, we'll get some money for this, but they're building before these things are even in place. They're already, with those 10 existing houses, there's already been drainage issues, there's already been pipes that need to be dig up. Who's going to pay for all that? That's going to be us. If we're going to grant variances, that's going to compound that problem, and the developer's going to be gone, and you're going to have to deal with it. One mile square, we don't get any more land. We've got a river, we've got a nice, small community. If you want to be unique, between two freeways, you know, they talk about we're a destination place, yeah, come have dinner, lunch, or whatever, I agree with that. But there's township space all around us to build. Why do you think developers want to build here? Because we have sanitary sewer systems and water already in place. They don't care if they overflow those systems by capacity, they'll cram as much as they want because they make money. And talk about opportunity, when did this all take place? In the middle of a pandemic, okay? Has nobody thought about that? And how many people can this mobile home community hold? So instead of 200 cars, is it 600 cars? It's only got one entrance? That's not wide enough? And you can't compare it to Uptown. I mean, I saved the light for three changes tonight to make a left-hand turn. You know what it took to get that light in this town? How many kids died crossing? We have a right to have our community, the bedroom community it is. We don't need to turn it into anything else. It doesn't need to be the big stadium of all the housing in the world. There's all kinds of land around us that could be developed. This developer knew, he's not stupid. He does this for a living, and you guys don't know what you don't know, okay? I've worked it, I've lived it, okay? Developers are there for one reason, to make money, and when they walk away, you've got the problem. You can't take it back, you can't make it go away. When you decide, you decide permanently for all the future generations, 37 years for me, and a lot for a lot of these people out here, and we like our town the way it is. We don't want to see all of it crammed in together. I don't want to be unique, I don't think you do. I don't mind driving five miles to Richmond to get to something, and yes, we need housing, but we have a commercial overlay uptown, apply for a variance somewhere in those places that can handle it. There's a lot of areas around here. They don't want to spend the money. They don't want to spend the money on putting in sewers and sidewalks and all this stuff. They want to spend the bare minimum and make the most. That's what developers do. Thank you.
Chris Mancik. Mancik?
Mancik.
Mancik, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here, having this meeting. My name's Christopher Mancik, 80461 Bell River Road. I am the adjacent property of this new development where the road plans to go in at. I have a few, I have serious concerns about this property. Number one, to start with, I have never once said I don't want to see condos there. When we had the meetings there before to change this to R1, I spoke okay on condos. Of course, I was never told at that time they were looking at 68 of them. When we talked about what the building designs were going to be and that, he said, oh, don't worry, you'll get to vote on that at a later sign. Well, now we're here. 68 condos will be the densest area in the state, in the city of Memphis. There is no other area in Memphis that'll have that concentration of housing, all right? That's too dense for that area. On top of it, the developer decided to cut that lot up and only have one entrance in and out. That's a safety issue. What if there's an incident in there? How are the fire trucks going to get in while the cars are trying to get out? All right, those road widths, so he wants to go down to a 25. That's going to make it even harder for that stuff. Those are some concerns. Another concern I have is the value of my house. When 68, that density goes in there, that's going to drop the value of my house. He keeps saying, or his attorney keeps on saying, that he's using the maximum allowable density for R1, but currently, that is not the maximum allowable, that's beyond the maximal allowable. That's why he has to ask for all these variances, because he can't fit them in there with the current ordinances. One of the attorneys we were talking to said that we should open these developers with open arms to build there, as long as they build within our ordinances. But when they start asking for variances, that's when we cut them off. I'm also got a concern about the flooding issues. We've already had flooding issues with the stuff that he's already built, and now he's going to put the property right along my yard, and according to the site plans that he's had there, it shows his property being slightly lower than mine, but when he builds the road, is he going to build that property up? Is he going to stop the natural flow of water off my property onto his? Because he doesn't have any swells on that side of the road. He has the swells on the other side. So is that going to flood my property? And who's going to pay to remedy that when it happens? I'm not going to say if it happens, because I know it's going to happen. So who's going to pay to remedy that? Is he going to still be here when that happens? Or is he going to be gone and I'll be suing the city over it? Another issue I have here is the water system. I know talk was about the lagoons. Has anyone talked about the supply lines for water? What are our water mains? Has anyone done a study to make sure we have enough flow? I know right now at my house, I can barely run a sprinkler system during pink, or two sprinklers during peak hours. During off-peak hours, I have no problem with it. During peak hours, I can't run it. So are we going to have enough water if there was a fire during peak hours with all this extra housing taxing our water system? Our water mains big enough to support this? Was there a study done on this? He talks about the side setbacks on it. Why are side setbacks important? Detroit learned that lesson many years ago when they built houses right next to each other. As a firefighter, I know the dangers of that. NFPA standard would allow his variance for the side setbacks. However, it would caution it in a city that does not have a full-time professional fire department, and no offense to the Memphis Fire Department, but it is a volunteer department. We have one fire engine. We have other surrounding communities that would come in. If we had a, if we had a fire in one of those buildings there, a 25% involved building, you're looking at needing 600 gallons per minute for that fire, minimal. Can our water system handle that? The builder was also proposed a, and I don't know all the details on it, but he had a proposed development in Bruce Township recently, and that development in Bruce Township was denied due to density. They said the density does not fit the area. Why are we going to allow that? That was much less dense than our area. Thank you very much.
Tina Mancik.
Hi, I'm Tina Mancik. I'm Chris Mancik, from my, this development has and will, allowing these variances is causing a negative impact on our community, as you've already heard. A year ago, I was summoned at a meeting. Go find someone to support you. Here it is. Okay? Let's start there. First, the proposed variance violates the existing zoning laws designed to preserve the character and safety of our neighborhoods. Allowing this development would increase traffic congestion and noise levels and disrupt our peaceful environment that our current residents value. Studies have shown that such changes can lead to or decrease property values for nearby homeowners. I believe that these changes here can build in our community within our ordinances. Second, the applicant has not demonstrated sufficient hardship or unique circumstances justifying a variance. The zoning laws exist for a reason. Exceptions should only be granted in rare cases where compliance is truly unfeasible. The applicant's desire for financial gain or, or convenience does not meet the standard. Sometimes people fail as lawyers to explain the legal terms, or matters. This or that matters, not just one, it's either or. So in fact, in honor of today, the police officers that are in the back room and our firefighters that are here, in honor of today being 9/11, we need to remember, our police and fire safety matters. My husband is a Detroit firefighter, he just spoke. I'm sure these officers would explain, if they've worked in other areas, the density, what happens to communities. This variance could set a very dangerous precedent, opening the door for similar requests that would further erode the integrity of our zoning regulations. Once one exception is made, it becomes increasingly difficult to deny others, leading to long-term negative consequences in our community. He should have been transparent in his actions from the beginning in stating, we want to build 68 condos back there and the sizes. Transparency had no value. The lack of this is an attempt to change the names of it being two plots or one plot, which is now has been labeled two. I'll get to that. I urge the zoning board to deny this request and uphold our existing zoning laws that protect the interests of residents like me and everyone else in this room. There are other many, other solid points I need to make. This is not a hardship for him. It is not unique. It is self-created. I lived next to that property for eight years. This is what that property looked like, a rectangle. He built those houses around there and made that road where he couldn't build without, within our zoning ordinances. He shouldn't have built the house next door to me, or, or Jim's house, or Jim's house. He could have put the road in the middle. We need two roads going in and out of there. When people get trapped back there, where are all of those people going to go? I was an ER nurse for multiple decades. People are going to die, and we're going to live with that. Didn't we just have children die here not long ago? We don't want it again. I don't want it again. It's horrible. He, everything he's done is self-created. Michigan law states that any variance in the state of Michigan can be denied on self-creation alone, and that has went to the Michigan Supreme Court. His lack of planning should not be my 200-car extra nuisance next door. The original plan, now I'm moving on to the one plot becoming two, the original plan envisioned as two phases of a single project, but eventually the parcels were developed separately. When? When did that come to the planning commission? He just changed the name. It would be like telling me, I know this is sarcastic, and I was told not to be sarcastic, but I'm going to say it anyways. It would be like me getting a goat and saying, no, that's a dog. Now I have four dogs. I'm not trying to be rude, I'm trying to put it in perspective that everyone understands. A goat is a goat. One plot is one plot. I don't care if you name it A, B, and C. This is not thing one and thing two. His hardship is his problem, not Bell River, Pratt Road, and Memphis's problem. Denying the variance doesn't deprive his use, it deprives him of having an extra vacation. The, the shape is not unique. He made it! It was, it was particular. Perfect.
Thank you. Cynthia Leggett.
Hello, my name's Cynthia Leggett, and I'm on 3465 Lawis.
Get up by the white place, I can hear you.
We've been there for 34 years. Our concern with these buildings going in, we have not even addressed any of the drainage behind our property and the neighbor that's behind us. Now, there was talk about some swell, swale going in there, and then we have a huge puddle of a pond, three or four houses down. So I haven't heard anything as to any drainage, our drainage on Lawis and Pratt or Bell River has not been addressed either. Well, we actually talked to the builder, and we were, everything was going to get taken care of, talked with Mel, and all of this should have been handled, but now we're having issues with water in our yard, and things keep getting built up. And I understand that Bob off of Pratt and Bell River has even a bigger issue with the drainage. It's, it's just that we need to settle down and not have so many come in and address problems that we already have that we're not even taking care of. And that's, that's, I simply don't have it with everything everybody else said, but I agree with them 100%. We, we are in a small community, and we've brought so many different things in to help build this place, but this is not going to get us anywhere. And as they're talking about emergency vehicles coming in, you guys aren't thinking if you're going to let them go with it. It's, it's got to be handled so that we can all live here in a decent place and not have to fight traffic and, and trying to get emergency vehicles in. And our children are walking to school, so now, now we're talking about the safety of the children and all these types of people trying to get in and out. It's, it's just something we really need to realistically think about. And it's very, it's heartbreaking that we have this going on in our community here in Memphis. We need to really, really think about it. And I understand they're trying to do what they're doing, too many, too many condos coming in, way too many, and then get everything else taken care of before that even gets started. When he did the three houses behind us, there was not even any fencing put around the basements. Now, we have children walking around, playing around. If one of them would have fell in there, that would have been, that would have been the end. So again, I agree with all these other people, and I, I want to live here. This is, this is my home. We raised our child here, so I thank you for listening and think about it, please, because this isn't the way to go, and as everybody said, he's just going to move on, and then we're stuck with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is Mr. Fields's lawyer, Jason Brown, or Joseph Brennan?
Joseph Brennan.
Is it possible to wait till the end, or is it to the way speaking?
I would like to delay if you want to allow that.
We can delay.
To the end?
You'll be second from the end.
Thank you.
There we go. Bob Riddle?
Bob Riddle, I live on the corner of Bell River and Pratt, 37 years. I've seen all the progress we want to make in town, which is nice if it comes to what it's supposed to be. From one thing to another, I'm one has the issue with the water problem. I have flooding in my backyard, I've been there 37 years, never had a thing go wrong with water whatsoever. Two times this year, heavy rains, put water in my barn because the people next door, nice people, have the three-foot elevation now. Everything runs right in my yard. Just like everyone else spoke about the merchanty places to get in and out of the condos place, I'm no different. I need safety. I come down Bell River Road, it's like going through a maze now. No one parked, can park in the yard, too many cars. The same, I can't speak like everyone else did because they got into a more, my problem is fix one thing before you get My problem is, fix one thing before you get to the next. I've been working on this since April, May. They all know about my flooding. They've seen pictures. Yeah, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this. Haven't seen a tension pond. It says, "Yeah, we'll get to it, we'll get to it." Or if you can't finish one thing, don't start another. That's all I have to say. I'm, it's, where do I go next? To the builder? To the city? I'm not one person to do that, but if nothing is done before the next step, business thing goes on with whatever condos you wanna make, I need to take action. And that's all I have to say. Very disgusting.
Kurt Mortimer.
We see him left like two minutes ago, walked out.
Diane Hewitt.
Hi, I'm Diane Hewitt. I'm Riley, and this is the first time I have attended one of these. I've had many other meetings. But I agree with what everyone has said so far. I want a million-dollar house, but I can't afford it. So, you see, you knew ahead of time what the project was, but decided to go further than that. Why do we need 68? Don't know. I'm just, I'm just so tired of big corporations coming in and telling us and pushing us to do what they want, to make money off of our backs. I am opposed, as you can tell. I would say follow the money. They knew again what they were getting into. And I have one question, and that would be, to define affordable housing, is that code for immigrant, illegal immigrants coming in and living there on our dollar? Thank you.
James. Whoody? Henny?
Henny, sir.
Henny. Close.
Henny would be close.
You have a call for us out there.
Hi, my name's James Hady. I live on Bell River. I'm one of the new homes. And if I would have known that they were gonna build a bunch of condos in the back, I would have never bought the house. So, I was told there was a sign out in the front. I knew there was going to be a development, but I just didn't know what. But I actually come to find out, I knew exactly what they were building from day one, so... And then there was an issue with the water. So, my neighbor next door, I talked to him, and I was like, "Wow, man." So, I got ahold of Bart here and spoke to him for like 45 minutes to an hour on the phone. He assured me that whatever they were gonna build back there wasn't gonna be big, because the infrastructure of the city wasn't there to handle anything large scale. So, that's why I was like, "Okay, no problem." So, I ended up buying the house. So, we come to find out, I don't know, I'm sure you've read the BMJ report, that, you know, there's, they want like $450,000 to fix just the infrastructure that was caused from just building these 13 houses, so... I've already looked at other builders about, about building another home and moving, so depending on, you know, the outcome of today would decide if I end up selling my home and moving. Because I'm, I own a condo in Shelby Township, and I've seen what happened where the economy tanks and all the condos turned into apartments, and I was surrounded by apartments, so that's the whole reason why I moved, to come to a small town, to get away. I had a house up, in Oakmont Township, about 10 acres, so I was like, I gotta go somewhere where it's not too far from my office, so I can drive back and forth. So, I drive almost an hour there, an hour back every day, and most of my neighbors do the same thing, to get away from the congestion and everything else that happens down, you know, down towards, you know, Shelby Township, Stone Heights, Clay Township, all that, so... I guarantee all these people are here for a reason, and it's because it's a small town. They wanna live in a small town. They don't wanna have, you know, a lot of people living, you know, especially in a small little area. And I am concerned about people's well-being, especially children. If they build all these condos back there with one way in, one way out, there's a problem. And Nate Sage suggested that, you know, "Well, the variances are okay, the setbacks are okay, because we'll use all of these guys' backyard." Well, I pay high taxes here, so my, my plan is if they build back here, I'm gonna build a fence or something right on the property line. And hopefully all my other neighbors will do the same thing, and we'll enclose them into a small little area, so... I don't plan on paying, you know, I pay $5,000 a year in taxes, so I'm not gonna pay $5,000 a year and allow them to use part of my backyard. So, I paid for 250 feet deep, and I'm gonna use every inch of it, so... Other than that, I mean, as you can see, you know, everybody's here. I've never seen this many people, even in Shelby. So, everybody's concerned about this, so that's my take on it. Thanks.
Jim. H. Fields.
Jim Fields, 80263 Bell River Road. I want to submit these, this is a signed petition to the property owners that are adjacent, most of which are here, signing in opposition to this. This is also a stack of packets with the picture of what we were sold, the timelines of the communications with the city to put into the record. Much of this is talked about. I'm gonna work on limiting this to just the variances.
Jim Fields.
I shot for homes. I picked Memphis, okay? I had a home in a small town in northern Indiana next to Notre Dame. I chose to live in Memphis. Why did I choose to live in Memphis? Because of Memphis. Memphis to me are the people that are sitting in this room, this community, this small downtown, a little bar, a couple pot shops, a river. It's Memphis. It's a small town. I did my diligence on the property, and I agree, like Jim said, another new home property owner. If I would have known that this is what was going in behind us in an act of faith and true disclosure, I would have not have bought this property in Memphis, okay? Now, much has been said, much has been implied. I'm gonna focus on the variances. What I have heard, and I will maintain, and I have put letters to the editors, and I'm sure people have read them in the paper, and I'm sure you've seen some of the things that have been out there, and I put it out in black and white. And I always say, the record is the record. So, people can say what they wanna say, but there is a record. There are paper trails, there are black and whites. And all I've heard is, "I want." These guys want. We want this density. We want this. We want this because the city has to put in this infrastructure that doesn't exist, and for them to be feasible to do so, we need to have this density. None of those reasons are reasons technically to grant a variance. You're already asking to overburden a property. That's all you've heard labeled with "I want." Now, if I wanted to, I could buy a house on 19, five houses from the gas station south, okay? And I could know all the variances. I could know every ordinance. I could know the entire code. And I could decide that I wanna build a fence, and I'm gonna use a fence, because this guy right here is very familiar with fences. And I know what Memphis code says about fences in that area, and it's commercial overlay district, but I don't care, 'cause I want my fence. And I don't want a six-foot fence. I want a six-foot fence, and I want it to go to eight foot, and I wanna do part of it with a picket, and I wanna do the other part with pink, and then I wanna use recycled pallets for the back half. And then the backside of that, I've got a 68 Camaro, and I wanna put it back, just because I want it. I don't care about the code variances. I will get friendly with people in town, and they will talk to me, and I will go out there, and we will promote this, because that's what I want, even though it goes against every code, and it doesn't make any sense to do it downtown. As a matter of fact, I think I'm gonna put an electric fence on the sidewalk, 'cause I don't want anybody near my property. That's just 'cause I want it, but that's a public safety issue. Okay? That puts it in perspective. I want all this. That does not mean that I can have it. Even if I want it and I cannot have it, there's a place, there's a system in place for me to try to get it, which is coming before the zoning board appeals. I respect the zoning process. I respect the legal process. I respect procedures. I respect law. I respect municipal law. I have very high expectations put on me when I go before cities and municipalities to perform my duties, and I expect the same of the people that are there to represent their citizens and function in their municipality. I started this process, and I was very clear with my intentions and what my stance were to support the city, to help you through this process, 'cause it is something I understand. It's unfortunate that we're doing this now, because this process should have been what played out two years ago. These variances should have been up front, put out front. Now, that would have probably affected some of the disclosures that they did to the new homeowners, and people probably would have seen things that you may be seeing now for the first time or hearing for the first time, and that's a shame, 'cause this is Memphis, and it is a really pleasant place. And even though we are on opposite sides of a lot of things, and I push back and people push back on me, I would still go to bat for people in Memphis, okay? Just so you know that. And I wanna go on the record and make sure that every one of you understands that. I will put my neck out for you.
Kim Gunst.
I didn't want to speak. Oh, 800, 8500 Bell River Road. I've lived here my whole life. I didn't want to speak, because I don't like making waves, but I just wanna say that I was excited when the houses were coming. A lot of the neighbors were like, "We don't want growth," but I understand that you gotta have growth where you can have it. I don't necessarily feel like the houses should have been built up like they were, and I would think a builder would know that. I'm not a builder, but I was on city council, and we were taught due diligence, due diligence. Make sure you study up and you know what you're talking about. And so, I just wanna welcome all the people that are in the houses. I do welcome them all. I love my neighbors. Kenny, you know. But I also wanna say that when I, I was the same way. Condos are a good thing. Seniors could sell their bigger houses and move into condos, but 68 of them there is just ridiculous. And now I found out it's because putting in the water and putting in the sewer is gonna be a great expense for them. Well, don't they care about our town too? Yes, they care about making money, but you shouldn't do everything on cheap. You should care about the people that you're building houses for. You wanna, you want your reputation to be outstanding, because you build great houses and you look out for people, and you put in sidewalks. I love sidewalks, but you already got those taken out for the new area. But I just wanna say that that is way too many homes. Memphis is not that big. We don't need to be, like others have said, we don't need to be a big town. We're, we'll take what we can fit comfortably and fairly for everyone. Thank you.
Josh Brennan. I'm sorry, Joseph Brennan.
Good evening. I've submitted a letter on August 6th to the zoning board and appeals. I hope you all got it. I don't wanna reiterate that here tonight. All I'm here to do right now is just to explain something that the developer's attorney said a moment ago. And that was that the definition of practical difficulty, which is the standard that we're here to discuss tonight, is not defined under the statute. It is not defined under the city of Memphis code. And while that's true, the term "practical difficulty" is a legal term of art, meaning that under the common law, it has acquired a very specific definition. Now, self-created harm, which is the standard that the attorney spoke about a moment ago, cannot be grounds for a showing of practical difficulty. Now, what is self-created harm? Okay, we'll talk about that in a second. But the Memphis code also talks about what the procedures are and standards are for creating ordinance. So, I'm gonna talk about that as well. So, going back to self-created harm. When a developer subdivides or physically alters property, this is very clear in Supreme Court precedent, in Michigan court of appeals precedent, if they subdivide or alter a piece of property and then later go ask for variances, meaning because they can't comply with a validly enacted ordinance, they have not grounds for practical difficulty, okay? The developer in 2021 subdivided the property into two parts. You had Phase 1, which were the units along Bell River and Pratt Road, and Phase 2, which is what we're talking about tonight. We're here to discuss dimensional variances, okay? In the developer's own variance application, they state they can't comply with the rear setbacks precisely because Phase 1 units are farther than they should be, okay? They also say that there's a unique flagpole-shaped strip of land at the north side of the property that's odd, and that is grounds for a unique, you know, characterization for the property. How did it become flagpole-shaped? They subdivided it, okay? This is a textbook case of self-created harm. Now, the Memphis city zoning code also has standards here that this body is, has, has to take into account. Michigan law respects these standards. You guys adopted them, okay? You voted for them. Section 150, 028B3 says, "The need for a variance must not be due to the applicant's personal or external hardship, or results of actions must not cause an adverse impact to the surrounding property or alter the essential character of the neighborhood." I can't add very much to what these guys talked about tonight in terms of altering the essential character of the neighborhood. You're gonna have a 68-unit multifamily apartment complex located here. That's going to cause increased traffic, increased noise. It's going to radically shape, it's gonna radically change the face of Memphis. That is grounds for the denial of these variances. This body has the authority to do that under Michigan law. Don't let the developer convince you otherwise. Okay. Another, another ground, you know, for considering practical difficulties, substantial justice. Now, the developer talked about what substantial justice means for them, but under National Volante, the National Volante's case, under Michigan's Supreme Court precedent, you're also, you're also to take into account substantial justice to the surrounding neighborhood. So, all these concerns here today, you can also take into account when making this decision. That's your prerogative. I would strongly suggest you do so. Again, variances are not, they don't exist under Michigan law to be a backstop for developers who didn't do their homework properly, okay? And this body has specific limited statutory authority under the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, as well as your own code. This is textbook self-created harm. They talked about the financial difficulties here. That's not a valid concern, and this will radically change the face of Memphis. For these reasons, I suggest that you deny these variances.
Kenny.
Good evening. My name's Kami Wehram. I'm the mayor of Memphis, and I also reside at 8111, 1111 Church Street in Memphis. Too many ones. I'm not gonna say a lot on this. I just want to, you know, thank everybody for coming here tonight. I wanna thank the zoning board to know, you know, this has been a long time coming. Unfortunately, this is something... Unfortunately, this is something that should have happened in twenty twenty-four. It should have. It's been, you know, pushed off and that is unfortunate and that is why we have so many people that are up in arms. I, you know, I came in as a mayor in November, so we've been trying to get this moved, you know, in the right direction and that's why it had to come to the zoning because it was, it was stuck in planning and the only next thing was it had to go to zoning. So I appreciate you guys. I appreciate everybody's comments and no matter what happens tonight, I, you know, I just want everybody to know that I know everybody on the city council and everybody on the zoning and the planning are truly working for the best interest of all the citizens of Memphis. Thank you.
Any other citizens wish to comment?
Oh, you're back. How you doing? I'm Nick Slikowski, eight zero two one six Bell River Road. I moved here three years ago. My wife was born and raised in Memphis, so I grew up on a clint top ship, moved out to the country a lot. So I live directly across the street from where these children have been building for the last three years. I can tell you, five o'clock in the morning, they start their equipment up. I don't know what the noise ordinance is, but it was way before that. Let them run for an hour or two. I'm pretty upset about this whole thing, like everybody else is here. My road particularly, my ditch, I don't know how fond like they are of cleaning up after they build these houses, but as you will see, I've been saving a souvenir in my ditch, which is a cone and it's got weeds growing out of it and everything. I just like to save it for a souvenir, hoping that maybe they'll come fix my ditch that is totally ruined. I used to be able to cut it, but now it's just rocks and weeds. So the other thing I did today was looked at the population of Memphis. I just Googled Memphis, Michigan and just seen the population, which was like eleven hundred people and it's changed. You know, every ten years they do the census, you know? And I had kinda just did some math and, you know, the most that had grew in ten years in one year, or ten years, was ninety-three people in ten years. And I'm like sixty-eight condo units times two people. That's, you know, that's a lot of people that is gonna grow. An average of two hundred cars a day. We don't get two hundred cars a week down Bell River. We think we're gonna do it a day, like really like. The other thing, my neighbor, he tells everybody to slow down because nobody does twenty-five miles an hour down Bell River, that's just crazy. So I can only imagine, he's gonna be out there every single day with two hundred cars and they're gonna be thinking this guy is, you know, crazy, but in reality, he's right. I mean, there shouldn't be two hundred cars coming down Bell River. Everybody knows that, that lives here, that there's no way it's gonna handle that. Couple other things, you know, not to say anything about the board or anything like that, but, you know, we weren't really notified. We're like, did we get anything in the mail that said, hey, this meeting was gonna happen today? I didn't get anything. My wife didn't get anything. My neighbor didn't get anything. A couple of the other neighbors didn't get anything. The way I found out about it was on Facebook, which is great. I love whoever posted on Facebook. Jim? Thank you. So I had said, okay, how do you find out about these things? You go to the Memphis website. Very nice website, by the way, right? Now, a simple thing I had thought, the frequently asked questions. Well, the board meeting was there, but the frequently asked questions. And one of them was, when is my garbage pickup? And you know what it says? It's on Fridays. Guess what? It's not on Fridays anymore, is it? Right? So a simple task like that is kinda, what are we doing here? You know, I mean, we can't even update what trash day is, but we're gonna update that these guys are coming and do the right thing and I just, sorry guys, but, you know, I don't think in a small town like this we want this. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to make some corrections.
Hi, I want to speak real quick.
Did you turn in a paper?
No, but you just asked if other people want to speak.
What's your name?
Jason Parker, eight zero one seven zero Bell River Road. Been living there for eight years. I was disappointed about the house being built, but it's light. Come to get used to it. I am that crazy neighbor that yells at people driving. I've got young kids. Lot more young kids are down Bell River now. More houses, more kids. All their families, starting families. It's feeders. It's just gonna get worse. I promise. And I ain't got enough eggs, so to throw at these people. So regardless, we gotta be smart about this. We are Memphis, right? We don't need to be growing out like that much. We've already had two pot shops, a little much, but whatever. We're dealing with it. Let's not add on more to our plate. Let's get this, nip this in the bud. They are here for the money. That's all they want. They don't care. Terry said it well. Once this is all in place, guess whose problem it is? Memphis. She said it best. So let's all just think about it. Let's make the right decision. These guys will go make money elsewhere and look at other options to deny them. That's all.
I just want you to be fully aware, there was someone that spoke that we have a water shortage, lagoon capacity. To this day, our, for many years, our design flow of our lagoons are at fifty-four point seven million gallon annually. We do discharge two times a year. We got three months of the spring, three months of the fall. And our water supply, we can reduce up to nine hundred gallons per minute. But again, will this impact our system? I'm sure it will, but we've got plenty of room to take care, take care of this, this development, down water and so around. We will talk at this.
Little close.
Hello, Chairman. My name is Spencer Hughes. I live at eighty-four hundred Bell River Road with my wife and our Beagle. And I apologize to all the long-term homeowners that you had to go through this. My grandma, she lives in a small town in Arizona and she's going through the same thing. And I also apologize that I don't, I haven't introduced myself. We just moved in last summer, or sorry, last December and we purchased a house in April twenty twenty-four, so we haven't moved here very long. I'm a lineman down in Detroit, so I work a lot, so I don't have a lot of time to be home. I, trust me, I don't make it home for dinner very much, so. But I just wanted to say, I, I was a lineman up in Gaylord and the community there is very small and they care about everybody and I see it here, looking at you guys and I appreciate it and I see my neighbors. You'll see us walking our Beagle up and down Bell River every day and I hope we're being kind to you guys because you guys are very kind to each other and I just wanted to say when we, when we took a tour of where our house is gonna be built, my wife, she, she pointed out the two plots land behind us and in front of us and we're right across from where the condos are being built and she asked if anything was being built and I don't think legally they can tell you, but they told us that nothing was being built there as of right now, but it turns out that since twenty twenty, they've been planning that out. So to be completely honest with you, I, I wouldn't have purchased that house if I knew that there was a condo going right there, but I, I don't know if I really have a, I haven't lived here long enough to really like complain as much as everybody else, but I appreciate everybody here and. Yeah, and to be fair, me and my wife, we were driving around New Haven and, and we were looking for a place to purchase a house and we drove through Memphis by accident and I was like, I really like it here. And I lived in the South and I liked their communities on there and I feel the same thing over here. I, I'm a veteran. I was in the Marine Corps, I was a machine gunner and I, I moved. I moved to Michigan. I went to the line school in Idaho and then I came back here and we just picked Memphis and we love it out here and I, once again, I apologize if I haven't introduced myself, but I do what I can and I hope we're quiet enough at our house. And I told my, my buddy at work where I was moving and he's, and he's familiar with Memphis and he's like, oh, they're not gonna like you. You're in the new houses. So I, I hope I'm being kind enough, so. My wife's Autumn, I'm Spencer. If you guys have any issues, please chew me out. I'm used to it, so.
Thank you.
All right, this meeting is closed for the public hearing.
I motion that we close the public hearing to public comment.
All those in favor? Those opposed?
Chairman, I ask that we give the applicant a time to rebuttal to statewide.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, again, thank you very much for your time. We thank the citizens for showing up as well. We know that we are not on the same page, but this is part of the democratic process and that sort of makes me feel good, even if we're not on the same side. I'm just going to talk about a couple of items that were brought up and just to clarify maybe some misunderstanding, starting with Mr. Weaver's comments about sixty-eight apartments, here referenced apartments over and over. These are not apartments. These are homes owned by homeowners, which are just attached condominiums. Apartments are available under this zoning, but when the rezoning request was made, the developer said he was gonna do his best to put in home-owned condos owned by owners. There's also mentioned that variances violate the law and that's not true. Variances are, are part of the law and they help factor in how we apply the law. Sixty-eight units has been a part of this plan for three years. As I mentioned earlier, the initial concept of this came about in twenty twenty-three, but even before that, future development areas were marked on all of site plans for not only this development, but the Memphis Meadows, single-family home. This project has not been done in the dark. It's been in front of three public hearings, including one in this room and this, excuse me, four, four public, five public hearings. Three of them included this actual plan that is in front of you, withdrawing the sixty-eight units. Another misconception is that the developer's coming in for money, for a quick hit. He's been here for over five years, paid taxes and this project is not something where he's gonna throw it together in six weeks and be out. Sixty-eight units in development like this is gonna take another five years, optimistically, if things go well and we continue to have a good economy. He's gonna be a part of, if this plan is approved and he goes forward, they go forward, excuse me, they're gonna be a part of this community for a long time. Another misconception, there was talk about using the backyard and I've mentioned that in one of our requests, that you add the two backyards together and they, they create buffer far in excess of what the setback. I did not make, intend that the backyards would be used together. The condo, the site condo would have their full backyard and the multifamily would have the twenty-five foot, it'd be a property line, they would not be shared area between the two of them. And again, another concern about overburdening the property and the number of units. The zoning ordinance permits a certain number of units per acre. That's how number sixty-eight came about. It's the number of units per acre maximum under the zoning. That's, and then that's the way a lot of these projects are designed. You look at the number and then you work it into the property. So it's not overburdening the property. That is what's allowed under fifteen point five acres, I think it's not fifteen point five, excuse me, it's about eight point seven, I believe, left, under the number of units per acre under the RM zoning ordinance. And then just one other item. You know, there's a mention of that this process been pushed off and the mayor mentioned that. Let me clear that was not through the developer pushing it off or trying, again, to do things in the dark. We've, we've tried to work with the city. We've, we've had some frustrations. We've had a lot of really good experiences in the last year with the planning commission, city council and this board actually taking this application. So the last year, things have gone well, but much better communication. But at the beginning of this project, there was some issues with communications and I understand that because you never, don't have a product like this in the community. So maybe it's never coming for you. So I just want to make sure that it's known that the developer is here. This is statewide Memphis. We're talking about big corporation. This is the corporation, these two, they're the only members of the company. And they're here and they said for another five years, part of this community. Again, thank you very much for your time taken in the evening, in the middle of the week. I appreciate it. Thank you for your comments and certainly listen to them. Have a great day.
If we should ask any questions that we have of statewide or at that point, if we don't feel we have any further questions, we can ask Mr. Francis if he has any questions.
Does anyone have questions for statewide?
I have some questions.
Okay.
Well, can you cite the exact place in which you are referencing eight units per acre? Because as far as I'm aware, that is not something that is laid out within our code.
I don't have it in front of me, but I can provide that if it'd be in zoning ordinance.
Additionally, what is the specific practical difficulty with developing a project of this nature on the parcel that would not be related to its shape as you, you have created that shape?
The particular practical difficulty of what, as we mentioned before, the cost is a significant practical difficulty. The cost of bringing in sewer, water, the road and the infrastructure, that is a practical difficulty. The other is, is, yes, this, the parcel looks like it does, but I disagree that we created that as the argument.
Had you retained maybe eighty feet from the single-family homes along this project? Do you think you would have been able to comply with our code of ordinances without necessarily needing variances?
I, I wouldn't be able to answer that question. That's a question for the engineer, but I, I imagine that he'd make more space.
Is your engineer present?
No.
Do they have any alternate versions of this plan? Are there any alternative versions of this plan that have been drawn and submitted?
This is the alternative version from the site plan that was conditionally approved, which we address one of the issues.
So you've only changed the building length?
That's correct.
The only alternative?
That's correct. Yeah, apartments would fit if we wanted to do that because they'd be smaller, but it was resounding that no one wants apartments. So that's why we did what we did. It's a lot harder to do what we're doing, to try and comply with what the people want. That's what they call us.
Right.
If we want to just make the money and run away, we can build an apartment that's much smaller. We can make them fit on there beautifully. We're trying to do the right thing, but we're getting punished over it and I don't understand and I know that.
People are stuck on the sixty-eight.
It's nice that everybody can hear.
Shut up to the microphone.
A lot of people are stuck on the sixty-eight units. It costs a fixed number to bring in water, sewer, all that infrastructure. It's a fixed number, whether I put in twenty units, whether you put in sixty-eight units. So to make the project make sense and pay for that infrastructure, you need the units. If we put in forty units, forget it, which doesn't make sense. We said that in the very first meeting when we brought this concept up and it was, yeah, great, sounds good. great, sounds good, go guys.
This, this, the dimensional variances necessary, necessary for this project would still apply to apartments, they would have to be, because those are the
Correct, but we're going from a 1,700-foot condo down to a thousand-square-foot apartment.
The buildings would be smaller.
Right.
Uh, I don't think you'd want a 56-foot road through there, but there could be a 56-foot road through there, so, um, yes, it'd be easier to put apartments
Lower property values, apartments appeal property values quicker than anything. Nobody wants, we don't.
If it's possible to develop this with a larger number with smaller unit sizes, why has that not been proposed to us?
That would be apartments.
That would be apartments.
But at the same time, if, if they could take a thousand, a thousand square feet units and have that be a profitable project for you, why are we not proposing a thousand-foot units instead?
The goal shouldn't be to say, oh, that's what we're, we're saying, if you sell a product on a thousand
If it's square feet, you want to lower property values, that's a good way to do it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, you have seen the focus, thank you.
So the question was, why don't we make them smaller? The thought process there is if you make the condo, the apartment smaller, it'll lower the property values because now you're probably looking at about a 260, 280,000-dollar value, which, that's gonna lower the property value. They don't want that. I'm, I'm not gonna speak for you, but I don't think you want that. You want your property values to increase if anything, right? You don't want them to go low. That's why we're proposing, the condos that we're proposing, we're able to put the infrastructure in, which isn't the millions, to do it. And you don't get it back, it's over a course of time. It's not like, take the money and run, that's not true. You don't build it overnight and get rid of it, it takes years. You put the infrastructure in first and you didn't put just two-foot of infrastructure and you put all the infrastructure and then you sell what you can sell. Saturation, how many did you say that went here in the last 15 years? I think we were the only builder in the last 15 years. So I believe that maybe it's a five-year project, I'm praying if it works for five years that we get it done in five. It'll probably be longer. Cost of holding, cost of everything, that is what we're trying to say. We're trying to do the right thing, we're trying to build a good product that'll hold value, that we are able to, yes, we are gonna make a profit, guess what? That's what we're in business for, but that's what everybody does. You don't go to work to lose money, you go to make money, that's what we do. As the people, correct? I mean, I'm not, I'm not different than anybody else. And, yeah, big corporation, it's me and him, that's it.
I'm taking a look at the truck I got.
Yeah, uh, my truck is 1999 and that's the one I use all the time. That's not a fake truck, that's what I use. It's got 134,000 miles on it, just turned. Anyway, I apologize, I'm passionate, sorry. Was there any more questions that I could maybe ask? I'm sorry to get wrapped up, but I get pretty tired.
I have a question for you.
I just wanna, when we start going through variances, that's when I would kinda like to ask individual questions for each variance. So can we do that as we start discussing each one separately?
She wants to ask questions for each variance.
Can we ask Mr. Francis if he would have any questions?
Mr. Francis, would you have something to say?
Good afternoon, um, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Al Francis, I'm the City of Memphis attorney. I don't have any questions, only a couple of comments. Um, I don't get a vote in this, my goal is to make sure the procedure and process is done appropriately, so I appreciate the microphones, I appreciate it being recorded because that's important. Um, and ironically, I, I tend to agree with the non-arguments that both council made, meaning that they put forth a direct legal standard for this board. Um, it's your decision to make what I would ask, is that as we go through each of the, I think it's now seven requests that are for you, that they be discussed individually and that the reasons for the vote be, um, uh, be clear on the record. So it's, it's not just, I don't know, we vote to approve or we vote to deny and then everybody says yes or no and then we go on with it. I want there to be discussion on each of the variants, so I don't have an issue with the, the asking questions during them. I don't mind standing here, if there's any questions for you right now, I'll be happy to answer them, but I don't have any questions as of right now for anybody.
Thank you.
So discuss them, uh, discuss the variances individually.
All right.
Could we see a good time to use the restroom before we start?
Run. Okay, let's start with section one. All right.
Um, I, I'd motion that we take a five-minute recess to allow people to use the restroom and catch a, get a drink of water, catch a chill breath.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Five-minute recess, folks. Okay, folks, I'm reiterating, Michigan Court of Appeals defined practical difficulty and when I'm using, down here, the denial or deprive any owner the use of his property, compliance would be unnecessarily burdensome. Granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner. I'm gonna start with the section 150.059A and 150.059B5A, requires a rear setback of 30 feet. 30 feet is Memphis code and in some of these buildings, there's only 20.5 feet on one through three. That's up against a baseball field of the high school.
One through three butts up to, to the single-family.
Or, I'm sorry, I apologize, single-family, dyslexia.
What is that?
It's a, what do you want me to? 123, it has 20.5 feet. I'm reading there where they submitted. If the owner of the three houses decided to put up a fence, there is no green space. Do we have comments? We'll start with you, Kevin. You wanna make a comment?
What is your own green space?
Well, yeah, instead of 30 feet that we require
Could you get 20?
20.5.
That's green space, isn't it?
That's not, it, it is the variation they're asking for, so.
Um,
We're going for, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I would say that we don't, we're not necessarily debating whether or not there, the 10 additional feet would be green space available to potential future residents. We would be talking about whether or not granting this variance removes the applicant's ability to use their property as it is intended within our zoning. So by not granting a variance of 10 feet, would we, would we take away their ability to use their property? And I believe they've stated that they could develop this property with, if no variances were granted as apartment buildings. That being said, if we're not taking away their, their property by not granting these variances, no variances should be granted.
Any comments?
Are you, are you saying that we should just say no to all these variances?
I'm not saying we should, I'm not saying we should say no to them at blanket, I'm talking about this one individually, but there's no practical difficulty associated with an additional 10 feet other than a financial, financial reason.
Well, the request of the variance, correct me if I'm wrong, is you need the additional 10 feet for this plan. You can have another plan that would meet the setback, but it wouldn't meet the density, correct?
That, that's correct.
So, um,
It would materially change what we're trying to achieve and we're trying to achieve this for the town, as somebody said, they want to have it the way it was, they want it to have good homes, they wanna have value, and how we go, I'm just saying, if we meet the criteria, if you look at just the one piece of what you're saying, yes, you're right, but if you look at the whole thing
Okay.
We, we are meeting the criteria of what everybody was talking about, about holding values, about having
Okay, I understand the values. And I think, I think you made the statement of 1,700 square foot per, per unit, right?
I, I don't know exactly, I don't have the drawings.
Okay, because I, I know the number was thrown out, something like that.
Saturday units are processing that and now it's like ranch-style units, um, I think we're at 1,500.
Okay, and then you, we were talking apartments at a thousand and you said that that was smaller, lower value, whatever. You could still have a 12, 1,400 square foot facility, you could have less than 68 square foot units and you could meet the, the ordinances, right?
That's correct. You can, you can, you can build one building and meet the ordinance. What we're talking about is highest and best use under the current zoning, meaning
Highest and best use, how do you define that?
Is the highest value, best use under the zone.
I, I would, I, I am in disagreement that our code states that you are able to build eight units per acre, I have read that, and no instance of our code. And in any, any code that I have read that would allow eight units per acre, that would be prior to subtracting the right-of-way, the retention pond, um, the, the building envelopes, and once you did that, you would be talking about, I don't know, six usable acres of land?
With all due respect, um, this was not designed by myself or either the members of the company here, it was designed by Urban Land Consultants Pete Snyder, he's designed about 500 developments in his hometown itself. So we rely on him and he, he's designed this, so I, I'm not able to answer that question for you tonight.
And also BMJ, your consultants approved everything that
I, I am, I am aware BMJ looks over this, that being said, they have on record stated that they did not review our code at, at any instance.
Your planning commission reviewed this plan twice with 68 units, right?
Right.
First time, this was never brought to our attention. City council reviewed this plan once with 68 units, never brought to the attention. So I'm, I can't be, I tried to look it up and break, I couldn't get internet, so I couldn't get an answer. I'm relying on Urban Land Consultants, if it's not one, then it'd have to reconsider, but it's technically, what Mr. DeMille and Mr. Skiba do is they go to Mr. Snyder and say, here's this property, here's the zoning, do what you can with this and that's how they design this stuff.
Mr. DeMille, Mr. Skiba Do, you hired this
Urban land.
Urban land
Yes.
To design your building, you guys do this for a living. This land has not grown or shrunk an inch. What parameters did he use, knowing our zones, knowing the state of McComb, um, codes and McComb County codes?
If, if you look on the right side of the drawings, there's a site criteria, it lists the building setbacks as a front of 25 feet, a rear of 30 feet, a side of 10 with a minimum of 20, which of course that is the minimum. So they had done some reading of our code of ordinances because they are able to cite the setbacks on their drawings.
Yeah.
I do, they worked hand-in-hand with BMJ on this and when we attended a meeting in the office over there, that BMJ was there and they were corresponding back, well, I'll use this, I'll send it to you, you send it back and they were going back, they were basically working on it hand-in-hand so it met what I believe was the criteria that you all need.
I read where it says it was not compliant, I mean, they are excited to have you build, but it stated, I'm trying to find it, where it, it still was not compliant to our own council here.
Does anybody have a copy of the code with them today?
Mr. Francis, you have a digital copy, correct?
I do, I'm not sure that I'm going to be able to find that quickly.
Which specific? What specifically would you like to address? I'm so sorry. There's no maximum coverage.
Why don't we go back up and have this discussion?
So what I'm gonna suggest at this point is this is a big issue for the planning commission, this is not, I don't want this before this community, this board at this point, I don't have an answer, I do, can't speak for Mr. Snyder other than he's doing this for 30 years and he's done dozens and dozens of developments. He pulled it out of thin air, maybe he pulled it out of thin air, it's not like he can do that, so. But again, this issue's not before the ZBAs.
Okay.
One of the things I'd like to mention is what Pete from Urban Land did tell us is when we get a drawing back from the city's engineer, whether it's your city or some other city, it's ready to build, it's like there's no, there's no, it doesn't, doesn't go back to like re-engineering or go back to this or that, I mean, it comes back to the engineer. Now, is there something special about this? I don't know, I'm quoting him and if we drag him into court, he will say that as well, that's me, I'm not making it up. He states that when you send in the drawings, it comes back from the city engineer, approved, ready to build, that's, that's all.
I'm gonna jump, I think we're getting a little far afield here.
Yeah.
Um, the question is whether the, the variance one, question before the ZBAs, because compared to, uh, the rear setback, that's what we should be talking about. And the standard is, um, again, practical difficulty considerations or whether the denial approves an owner of the use of the property, compliance would be unduly burdensome or grant, or granting variance would do substantial justice to the owner. So those are, those are the factors that, that we're here to talk about.
All right.
I, I would motion that we here, hereby deny statewide variance, uh, statewide Memphis LLC's variance request for parcel 040302151-007 to allow a rear setback of 25 feet and not the 30 feet required by the Memphis Code of Ordinances in 150.059A, whereas the applicant has not demonstrated undue hardship or circumstances unique to their property. Voting in favor of this would be denying the variance request specific to the rear setbacks.
I should also mention, because I haven't, I know it's in correspondence that I provided, to grant a variance requires a two, under your code requires a two-thirds vote of the body, I just wanted everybody to be aware.
I, I'm not sure that we need a motion, I think we need to vote individually.
You do.
You're going to vote individually.
You're voting individually upon my motion to deny the variance.
I've got a question of our, uh, circum, uh, procedure, should it be a proposal in the affirmative and then have not two-thirds?
As long as we're, we're
I mean, he's got a negative motion and I don't know if we can back that into two-thirds and also have a question of what was voted and how it was voted.
His motion is to deny.
Right.
I will rescind the motion if that's your advice.
You, you wanted no so that you're clear on the two-thirds?
That's correct.
Or you wanted yes, so you're clear.
I'm sorry.
You wanted yes, so you're clear on the two-thirds.
So you would like a yes and by the vote failing, it would thus be
Correct. If, if, I don't wanna have a legal issue with council, if that's what he's comfortable with, then, then, and that's what, you're clear on the record, so it'd be clear if you the, if the yes vote doesn't get two-thirds, it's a, it's a no.
I think that erases any.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So, give you approval, I could read this off.
One second, I hereby rescind my, my motion of denial, um, and I will so move that a, I motion that we hereby approve statewide Memphis, uh, Memphis LLC's variance request for parcel oh-four, oh-three, oh-two, one-fifty-one dash oh-oh-seven, allowing a rear setback of twenty, uh, twenty feet, uh, and not the thirty feet required by the Memphis Code of Ordinances, one-fifty-point-oh-five-nine-A, whereas the applicant has demonstrated undue hardship, undue hardship and circumstances unique to the property.
Okay, all those in favor?
Individual.
Individual.
Also, as part of this, I would like the, the each vote, each member to state the reason that they're voting, it doesn't have to be an exhaustive hour-long conversation, but what, what is not a practical difficulty? This important for our record, or otherwise we're going to be back here doing this again, which we're trying to prevent.
Does, does the zoning board understand what's here?
I can't hear you.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
If you vote, if you vote yes, you're approving the order, the, the variance, if you vote no, you're denying the variance, I just need to know the reasons you're voting.
Okay, I, I, I just want to ask one more question. A lot of the, a lot of the, a lot of the property, it, it's up to the detention pond and to the school, so there's hundreds of feet back there.
Pretty much they have.
But then there are three, it's three houses, where there's a, is that, where there's, you're asking for ten feet, you're asking for.
There's pretty much three buildings.
You're asking from three buildings.
No, no.
No, no.
It's, it's buildings one, two, three, seven and eight, sixteen, fifteen, fourteen, thirteen. Thir- thirteen through sixteen butt up against the school.
Property.
Seven and eight butt up against the Manzix property, one through three butt up against the new builds.
But they're all the new build, they're not all the new builds.
There's two that back.
There's two that.
Back up to the Manzix.
That back up to the.
Um, so now we do a roll call vote?
Do a roll call vote. All right. Mazur?
No.
We need to know the reasons.
Please, please state your reason.
He brought the undue hardship by giving the homeowners extra land, so if you would have shortened their land length, you would have been able to, uh, provide a setback that according to our ordinance.
Powers?
No.
Any reason?
Overpopulation, and when I read that, and I found out that they slipped another phase of building in there, they had to change all, brought all this about, and so that's why we're sitting here, and it's too much, too many people with that small area.
Goon?
Uh, I'm going to hold, I don't think, uh.
Again, we need to, we need to factor on the practical difficulties that are laid out as the reasons, if, if that's what you believe, those are what we should be focusing on in the vote, okay? So those issues are, again, whether the denial deprives the owner of use of property, compliance would be unnecessarily burdensome, or granting a variance would be substantial justice to the owner, those are the issues that we're focusing on.
Then, could you, could you please explain, um, what, what hardship, what hardship would you, what hardship would you have if we denied this variance?
Well, we, we've already spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in engineering, and that was approved so far. That's a hardship in itself, and going back, and it would be a hardship perhaps on the folks that are here, if you go ahead and deny us, because we have no choice but to build apartments, that is not going to be homeownership, that's not going to add to anybody's value, but that's your choice, but that's, would be a hardship not only for me, but for them, so we have a financial hardship upfront.
Well, first of all, you can't build apartments back there, because you promised us you were not going to build apartments back there, so that's not going to happen.
We're getting far afield, apartments have nothing to do.
I know.
With what the issue is here today, they aren't allowable use in the RN.
But they can't threaten to put.
They're not threatening, we're, we're here, I want to stay on point. If we could, it may be easiest if we have each zoning member, I can ask the question, uh, the three practical difficulty clarifications to each member, you can answer on those, but we, we need to focus on the issues and the practical difficulties on the standard, that's what we need to focus on.
Why don't we do, why don't we do that?
So he, so basically, they have to meet all three criteria.
Or?
A criteria.
A criteria.
I'm really torn on this, I don't, I don't know what to do.
Um, the next.
Continue the next.
Sir? Quite a word, is it, can I address the zoning board?
If, if it's up to.
Can we finish this word?
We're going to finish the vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, yes, will you, um, ask the questions of Mr. Goine, so he can continue with his vote?
Does the, did the variance demonstrate that if granting the variance would, I'm trying to phrase this, I want to think how I want to phrase this to everybody. Is the, is the property owner able to use the property without the variance?
That would, that would, to you, Mr. Goine.
Say that again.
Is the property owner able to use the property without the variance?
Yeah.
Would compliance with the zoning ordinance be unnecessarily burdensome?
Yes.
Would granted, so you believe it would be burdensome for them to comply with the ordinance? Without the, I'm only talking about the setback.
Repeat it again.
They're asking for a variance on the setback. One of the items they have to prove, or one of the ways they can prove that, is if you make them comply with the setback, it would be unduly burdensome. The question is, would it be under, unduly burdensome to comply with the ordinance if you don't grant the variance?
It wouldn't.
My one.
Maybe change. I'm at a no.
Would granting the variance do substantial justice to the owner? Statewide.
No.
And your vote is no on the variance or yes?
Mine is no on the variance.
We'll go through the same questions.
Um, Henley?
No.
And the reason, do you want me to ask the questions, or do you want to give the reason?
Well, we have the code, um, the misplanning of the use of land, and assuming that the land they're bidding up to is, uh, something they can say is open, that's, it was misplanned, and that's not a hardship that was caused, I do, don't wish to create a precedent by changing our zoning law. I need them to come back and, and show, uh, good faith and redesign, because that hasn't been forthcoming as far as I know.
Let me ask you, would, is the owner able to use the property without the variance?
Yes.
Is compliance with the current zoning code without a variance unduly burdensome?
No.
Is granting the variance a substantial justice to the owner?
I have trouble with the words in it, a justice to them, I, I, can you say the phrase a different way? I don't understand.
That's the standard, would it be, would it be substantially just to have them to grant the ordinance? Variance, are they?
No.
Your vote, yes or no, on granting the variance?
No on variance.
Barber?
I'll ask. Would you be denying the owner a use of the property if you deny the variance? Can the owner use the property without the variance? I'll ask it that way.
Yes.
Is compliance with the current zoning ordinance, if the variance isn't granted, undoing, unnecessarily burdensome?
I'm going to say no to that one.
Would granting the variance do substantial justice to the owner?
Would it do justice to the owner?
Correct.
Yes, it would.
Granting the variance would be sus- why?
Because we've approved all of these plans more than once, and they've waited, they've, it's been a long process, and now, you know, in that case, I'd have to say yes, so I'm saying yes to two out of three things.
Saying, saying no to two out of three things. Correct, said no to the first two.
She said yes to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I said yes, I think I said yes, no.
So how's, what is your vote then? It's an or.
It's an or?
So whether the denial deprives an owner of use of the property, compliance would be unnecessarily burdensome, or granting a variance would do substantial justice to.
Yes.
Dunbar?
Let me ask, whether granting the variance, with, whether granting the variance, I'm trying to struggle with the first one, I'll phrase it, whether the, whether the owner is deprived of use of the property if the variance is not granted?
No.
Whether compliance with the current code would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting the variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
No.
What's your vote?
No.
Brewster?
Uh, whether the, whether granting the variance, whether denying the variance would deny the owner use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the current code would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
No.
And what's your vote?
No.
Yep, uh, that, that motion fails, and the variance request is denied, um, by more than two-thirds.
We're going to section two. Section one-five-oh-point-zero-five-nine-A and one-five-oh-point-zero-five-nine-B-five-A requires a setback of twenty-five feet.
Front.
From the front, front setback, I apologize, front setback of twenty-five feet. They're requesting.
They're requesting a variance of twenty, of twenty feet, that is also contingent upon the granting of a variance for the right-of-way, though.
Correct.
They, they would like, they would like the front setback to begin from the end of the sidewalk, which currently it begins from the end of the right-of-way, so those are two, uh, issues that are essentially the same. Mr. Francis mentioned it in our, in our letter, forty-five feet is a proposed right, uh, in his letter, forty-five feet in his, as a proposed right-of-way, is not, is not crazy by the standards of other communities, that being said, it's not the standard of, of our community, and I don't think developing the project with a sixty-foot right-of-way would take away the applicant's ability to use the property.
What's, what's wrong?
So you.
That's, I'm so sorry, I technically jumped ahead there.
Yeah.
The front, the front setback of twenty-five feet.
Let's just do each one as we do it.
Yeah. I, I believe the project could be developed in such a way that a front setback of twenty-five feet is capable of being met.
Call and vote, Scott?
Um, well, I'm. I, does anyone have any, any other questions or discussion about that? Okay, I motion that we hereby approve statewide management LLC's variance request for parcel oh-four, oh-three, oh-two, one-five-one, oh-oh-seven, allowing a front setback of twenty feet as opposed to the required, um.
Twenty-five.
Third, uh, twenty-five feet, uh, required by the Memphis Code of Ordinances subsection one-fifty-point-oh-five-nine-A.
So we need a roll call vote?
Correct. Uh, we also need somebody to second that motion.
Second, second, Scott, call the roll call. Mazur?
No.
Can we, can we do the exact same thing?
Same thing.
Whether the denial of a variance deprives an owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
No.
I'm going to ask another question on these two, um, whether, uh, the request for a variance is due to, um, self-creation.
Yes.
And your vote is to grant or deny a variance?
Deny. No. Powers?
I can't vote for it, because.
Well, let me ask you the, let me ask you the next question.
I go back into what I told you before.
He'll ask you the question.
Let me ask you the questions, whether granting, whether denying the variance deprives the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code as written would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do justice to the owner?
No.
Whether the request for a variance is based on self-created conditions or armed?
No. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Your vote is to grant or deny a variance?
That's not again?
Your vote is to grant or deny the variance?
He said, you want to grant or deny the variance?
Deny.
Goon?
Whether denial of a variance deprives an owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether denial of a variant, pardon me, whether compliance with the code as written would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
Yes.
You believe you'd be great, the variance should be, it would do justice to statewide?
Yes.
Uh, whether the need for the variance must not be due, whether the need for the variance is due to the self-created harm, or self-created conditions?
Yes.
And your vote to grant the variance is deny or grant?
Deny.
Henley?
Whether granting, pardon me, whether denying the variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to statewide?
No.
Whether the request for the variance is due to the applicant's personal, um, creation?
It is.
And your vote to grant or deny the variance?
Deny.
Barber?
Whether denying the variance deprives an owner of use of the property?
Yes.
Whether compliance would be unnecessarily burdensome?
Yes.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
Yes.
Was the request for a variance based on, uh, the self-creation of statewide?
No.
And your vote to approve or deny?
Approve.
Approve?
Approve.
Dunbar?
Whether denying the variance would deprive the owner of, of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to statewide?
No.
Whether the request for a variance is due to the self-creation, um, self-created issues of statewide?
Yes.
Your vote to approve or deny?
Deny. Myself.
Uh, whether denial deprives statewide, uh, use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code, uh, would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to statewide?
No.
Whether the request for a variance is due to the, um, actions of statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
So now we move on to.
We're going to go on to section three.
Correct.
All right. Section one-fifty-point-zero-five-nine-B-five-A requires a side setback based on overall building length.
Our code requires that for each, um, each foot in building length over forty-five Our code requires that for each, um, each foot in building length over 45, or already over 40 feet, the building's side setback increases by a foot. So if a building is a hundred foot, feet long, because that's six increments above 10, the side setback would increase by six feet. So in this instance, they have buildings of 120 feet. So you're talking about an increase in eight feet. For a total side setback of 36 and 34 feet, they are proposing 20 feet in between all buildings. This, this would be another instance where I, I don't think that the, the property is unusable. If you comply with the, the side setbacks, uh, you could develop it in such a way that, uh, that there is ample space in between each building. Does anyone-
I think a lot, I think a lot about condominiums that I've owned and, um, that I've visited.
Right.
Pardon?
Right.
And I, I've been in plenty of areas where of 20, there's, the buildings are 20 feet or less.
Yeah. I think it's important-
You know, I think we need to- This condominium ordinance has never been tested.
Right.
This was patchwork together years ago to, um, so we could have a condo ordinance. And so I think, I think we have to look at the overall picture here and recognize that sometimes our ordinance doesn't fit the element.
I definitely think there are instances in which our code of ordinances could be amended. I would be happy to vote on those in my capacity as a legislative member, but I do not think that's our role here as a zoning board member. That being said, condominiums is a ownership style. It's not a development style. So condominiums have to comply with the code, uh, with the ordinance, uh, with the district in which they fall. So because these are in the residential multiple, all of these, uh, all of these codes that are being applied to this project also apply to the residential multiple buildings in our city. So any, any building built within a residential multiple would have to, would have to complete, or would have to satisfy these requirements. It is not just because they are condominium that they are satisfying these requirements. So I know that, I know that our condominium ordinance is untested and I know that there's some contention around that.
Well, it's being tested today.
It is definitely being tested today. I mean, if, like, as I said, if council wants to take the time to review the, the setbacks of these buildings in its legislative capacity, I think that, I think that would be something that would be worth pursuing. But in our, in our focus here as zoning board members, it's whether or not it takes away, it takes away their right to use the property. Is it unduly burdensome? Does it create, uh, was it self-created? We're focusing on those questions when considering these issues.
Should call for vote?
Maybe since we're, we've kind of got a way we're doing this now, I'd be comfortable if there was a motion to call the vote and I'll just ask approve, deny.
I, I would motion that we call for the votes regarding the, uh, section 150.059B5A and statewide, uh, Memphis's variance request.
Second.
New roll call.
Roll call. Scott? Mazer?
No.
Let me ask the questions again. So, uh, whether granting this, whether denying this variance would deprive statewide a use, use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code as written is unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance, the variance requested would do substantial justice to statewide?
No.
Whether the request for a variance is due to self-created conditions of statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
Powers?
Whether denial of a variance deprived owner, deprived statewide of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code as written would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Whether the request for a variance is due to self-created difficulties of statewide? And your vote is to approve or deny?
Go on.
Whether denying a variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code as written would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Whether the request for a variance is due to the self-created difficulties caused by the owner?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
Henley?
Whether denying the variance would deprive an owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code is unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Whether the request for a variance is due to self-created, um, difficulties caused by the owner?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
Garber?
Whether the denial of a vari-
Can I abstain?
Based on?
Because I, I'm not sure what to do with this. So I, I'm gonna-
It's not, it's not a basis to abstain.
I can't abstain.
It's not a basis to abstain. You'd have to add essentially a financial interest and it would have probably applied to all of them, all of us.
This is really tough.
Yeah. So whether the denial deprived, denying, pardon me, whether denial of a variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
I'll say no.
Whether compliance with the code as written would be unnecessarily burdensome?
Yes.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
Yes.
Whether the request for a variance is a result of the self-created practical difficulties caused by the owner?
No.
Okay, your vote is to approve or deny?
I'll approve it. But, uh, it's not going anywhere anyway, so.
Dunbar?
Uh, whether denial of the variance deprives the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a, a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Whether the request for the variance is created by, or caused by the self-created practical difficulties, uh, caused by the owner?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
Uh, whether denial of the variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code as written is unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Whether the request for a variance is based on self-created difficulties caused by the owner?
Yes.
Your, uh, vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
Section 4, 150.059B5A limits the building length to 125 feet. They have amended that and no longer have any buildings over 125 feet.
So, well, section five?
Correct.
Uh, section five, that's 150.059A, limits, limits building height to 25 feet. They're asking for a variance to 28 feet? Where is that? 28 feet. So, our motion to approve?
Ask, bring it to a vote. I'll go through the questions.
Okay, we'll do that.
Do we have any discussion on the matter or do we wish to take it straight to vote?
Straight to vote.
Do we have any discussion on the matter?
Hi, Duncan.
Yeah, Henley, hi.
I guess I, I look around town and there's a whole lot of home posts that are taller than 25 feet.
So-
I don't think that three feet is gonna-
Let's call for vote. Scott, new roll call.
I-
Make a motion to all of them.
I, I motion that we vote on statewide Memphis LLC's variance request to allow a building height of 28 feet as opposed to the required, uh, 25 feet in section 150.059A.
Scott, roll call.
Mazer?
Yes? I'm gonna ask a question.
Ask a question.
Whether the denial of the variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code as written would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Would granting a variance do substantial justice to statewide?
No.
Was the request for a variance caused by the self-created difficulties of the owner?
Yes.
Your vote on, uh, of variance is approve or deny?
Approve.
Powers?
Whether denying the variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Is the request for a variance caused by the self-created conditions of statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Go on.
Whether denying the variance would deprive the owner of, of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Whether the request for a variance is caused by the self-created conditions of statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Approve.
Pardon, what did you say?
Approve.
Henley?
Whether denial of the variance would cause, pardon me, whether denying the variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Whether the request for a variance is due to self-created conditions, uh, caused by statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
I approve it.
Garber?
Uh, whether denying the request for a variance would deny the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance would be unnecessarily burdensome?
Yes.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Is the request for a variance based on the self-created conditions of statewide?
No.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Approve.
Dunbar?
Whether denying the variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Was the request for a variance based on the self-created conditions caused by statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
Great, great question.
Yeah.
So several members of the zoning board said no to the first two questions and yes to the final question, meaning that it did not diminish.
Correct.
So, does that mean, if, if that's the case, I want to be clear, before you approve this variance, all right? Do you really want to grant the variance or deny the variance because the standard that you just lay out? Your answers to those questions-
It's gonna be on the record. Their answers are on the record. That's why we're doing this. Their votes on the record.
Oh, the session's closed.
Yeah, you, you, yeah. So I, I'll remind you, the, the, the organs does state that if it was self-created, um, that's, that's a reason to deny it, but your votes are on the record and I'm asking you these questions because we want to know your answers, right? So, um, I don't know where we're at now. Are we done with that?
It's on the last one.
Whether denying the variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Is the request for a variance based on the self-created conditions of statewide?
Yes.
Uh, your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
So how many?
That was four to seven, which fails because that's not a two-thirds majority.
Five, yeah, five is required.
Yep.
Okay.
Number six?
Section six.
This is the, the, we have 151.3, uh, 36C1 requires a 60-foot right-of-way. This is just a, uh, this is a strip of land dedicated to vehicular, pedestrian travel and all of the utilities that would be found within the project. Our, uh, code of ordinance requires 40 feet. They do not, their drawings do not specifically indicate what their intended right-of-way is. I would assume based-
Mr. Dunbar, I believe you just told it 60 feet is required by your order.
60 feet is required, correct.
And there is one for 45.
Uh, yes, they do not specifically designate that on their drawings, but that is the width between the, um, the sidewalks is 45 feet. So I would assume that is their intended right-of-way.
That's the request. I believe it's 45 foot, yes.
Correct. Uh, the only thing I would, I would mention about that is there are what looks like to be easements outside of the sidewalks. So this, these would, this would be land turned over to the city. And in the, in an instance in which a water main breaks, somebody could be on your front property, fixing such, that water main. So, um, then as it is proposed, not, not all the utilities fall within this right-of-way. Does anyone have any questions, comments, discussion? I, I hereby motion to vote on statewide Memphis's, Memphis LLC's variance request to grant, um, a variance for section 151.3, uh, 36C1, granting a variance of a 45-foot right-of-way as opposed to the required 60.
Second. Mazer?
Whether denying the variance deprives the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Is the request for a variance based on the self-created conditions or difficulties caused by statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
Powers?
Whether denying the variance deprives the owner of use of the property?
So, yeah. See?
Yes, sir.
Whether depr- denying the variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code would be unnecessarily burdensome? Did he answer, I'm sorry?
He said no, I'm sorry.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
I'm having a long time here.
Would it, would it provide substantial justice to the owner?
No.
No.
Whether the request for a variance is based on the self-created difficulties caused by statewide?
Yes.
Is your vote to approve or deny?
Approve.
You're approving the variance?
Go on.
Whether the denial deprives an owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
Yes.
Is the variance request based on the self-created difficulties of statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
Henley?
Whether depr- whether grant, pardon me, whether denying the variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code would be unnecessarily burdensome?
Yes.
Whether granting a variance, the variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
Yes.
Whether the request for a variance is great, is based upon the self-created conditions of statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
I approve.
Garber?
I, I just want to throw one more thing in here. The Memphis streets, the regular streets in town, the right-of-way is 50 feet. The Memphis streets, the regular streets in town, the right-of-way is fifty feet.
They're sixty.
Pardon?
They're sixty.
That's all right, go ahead, keep going.
Whether denial of the variance?
Sixty-six for the, right, major ones?
Sixty-six for major streets, it's fifty feet for local streets.
Bell River has a right-of-way of sixty, right?
Robert, oh, God.
Why is that different, I'm sorry? That's, we'll talk about that later, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just pointing that out for asking for forty-five in a condo development instead of fifty.
Whether the denial deprives the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code would be unnecessarily burdensome?
Yes.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
Yes.
Whether the request for a variance is caused by the self-created conditions of statewide?
No.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Approve.
Dunbar?
Whether the denial of variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Whether the request for a variance is based upon the self-created conditions of statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
Whether denial deprives an owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Whether the request for a variance is based on the self-created difficulties of statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
Four to those, three approved.
That, that vote failed as well.
Just for record, it did fail, the vote was to, the variance failed.
The variance failed, correct, I'm sorry.
Section one fifty eight point one-one-seven D requires an on-street parking to be allowed. They're requesting... The parking be allowed on one side?
They're requesting no parking.
No parking, that's right.
The ordinance requires parking on one side, they're asking, no parking.
The interior units of the quadplexes have single car garages and single, very smaller driveway than the outs, or smaller driveways than the outside. It looks to me that you would only be able to park two cars there. In the instance that they have guests or two, more than two cars, what would, what would the plan be for that? It's just not allowed.
No holidays.
Are there any guest parking spots in the complex?
Not seeing the other, drawing.
No guest parking?
Does anyone have any questions or discussion?
I don't, we don't allow parking on our streets, on any street in town.
In the instance that we required parking on this street, it would have to be wider than the twenty-five feet being proposed. The average, the average lane width in the U.S. is ten feet.
I know there were a lot of complaints on Bell River Road about a couple of people parking their cars on the street. And that road is, what, twenty feet maybe?
Right, so in the instance where we required on-street parking in this development, the road would, would need to be larger to accommodate for that, such as twenty-eight feet in areas designated to have parking. That would be two ten-foot lanes and an eight-foot, eight-foot parking lane.
So, safety?
I'm sorry?
It'll allow municipal safety to get through the...
That increase wouldn't necessarily allow, wouldn't necessarily increase our first responder's response time. I mean, twenty, ten, ten and a half feet roads which are being proposed, that, that's a standard lane, all of, all of the roads in Memphis are twenty feet. So, I mean, the real issue is whether or not there's adequate parking as they have suggested, which the average car per Michigan, the average cars in Michigan is two and a half per household. So, the average family can't move into the interior units with no guest parking.
These are two-car garages?
The outside ones are in the east.
And the one-car garages still have an approach where you could put, you can put two more?
One in, one out.
Or you have one in, one out?
So you could have three, three cars?
No.
One in the garage and one outside?
If you parked a second one, you'd be sticking out into the road and blocking the sidewalk, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to do that.
Well, no, of course not.
To me, to me, on-street parking is required, but if there are no discussion, I will, I will make the motion. I motion to vote on statewide Memphis LLC's variance request in reference to section one fifty point one-one-seven D requiring on-street parking. And their variance to have that waived, the requirement waived.
A second. Moser, Mazur, sorry?
Whether denying the variance request would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance is substantial justice to the owner?
Yes.
Whether the request for a variance is caused by the self-created conditions of statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
Powers?
Whether denying the variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner? Whether the request for a variance is caused by the self-created conditions or difficulties of statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Approve.
I'm sorry.
Approve.
Approve.
Go ahead.
Whether the denial deprives the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance is substantial justice to the owner?
Yes.
Is the request for a variance a result of the self-created difficulties of statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
Henley?
Whether denying the variance deprives an owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
Yes.
Is the request for a variance caused by the self-created conditions or difficulties of statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
Garber?
Whether denying the variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the current code is unnecessarily burdensome?
Yes.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
Yes.
Is the request for a variance caused by the self-created conditions or difficulty of statewide?
No.
Your motion, or pardon me, your vote is to approve or deny?
Approve.
Dunbar?
Whether denying the variance would deny the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code is unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance is substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Is the request for a variance based on the self-created conditions or difficulties of the owner?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
Whether denying the variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Is, whether compliance with the code as written is unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance is substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Whether the request for a variance is caused by the self-created conditions or difficulties of statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
What was the vote on that?
That, that motion failed and the variance request is denied.
Four, three?
Yes.
Okay, it's fine.
Five, two, eight.
Five, two. Well, it's five.
It's five, five, two, I'm sorry.
Five denied, two approved, correct.
Okay, section eight, it's one five one point five-five E requires road pavement width of fifty-six feet.
I, I for the longest time have said this is a typo. I don't, I don't think, no, no road is fifty-six feet as they have, as they, as they have demonstrated. That being said, this, this has kept me up at night. I don't know how you type a five instead of like a three or something. And it occurred to me yesterday that the road, the road width that they're requiring is two ten-foot lanes and two perpendicular parking spots, which are an average of eighteen feet for a total of thirty-six feet plus the twenty-foot. So they were, they were, it was, it's fifty-six feet and they're anticipating two perpendicular parking spots. That being said, I don't, I don't think we need that. There's no reason to have fifty-six feet, that, that's crazy. I don't, I'm not an engineer, I don't know what the appropriate road width would be, especially if we require on-street parking. I would, the estimate would be twenty-eight feet.
Well, we're not talking about on-street parking now, we're just talking about the road width.
Correct, but that variance failed and we would have to take that into account when determining the minimum road width, right, Mr. Francis?
It's a fair, it's a fair condition to consider.
Okay. I, I would assume it would be twenty-eight feet. Can we approve a variance of twenty-eight feet contingent upon engineering approval? Or would that be something?
You can, you can put conditions upon it, I want to be very specific about what the conditions are.
They're asking for twenty-five foot, right?
They're asking for, they were asking for twenty-five foot and no parking though. And you, twenty-five, twenty-five foot, eight feet of parking, now you have a road width of seventeen feet, which leaves road widths of eight and a half car, or eight and a half feet, that's the width of a car, you can't do that.
I think that's pretty generous to have a twenty-five foot.
Yes, but a, a fire truck's like nine feet, right? Ten, so, so you can't, can't account for that small a road width.
I've never seen a condo development, ever, with a twenty-eight foot driveway.
Did you ever see one with a fifty-six?
There's no way.
I've seen them with twenty-six and they allow parking on both, or twenty-eight, they allow parking on both sides. I mean, but it's not what, what other communities do, this is the standard of our communities.
So how do we want to go with this one, this is?
I would, I would motion that it be approved contingent upon engineering approval, is that satisfactory?
What do you want the engineers to approve? And whose engineers?
I would like the approval, I would, I would ask that we grant the variance contingent, or ask, we grant a variance of twenty-eight feet contingent upon the approval of the city's engineering firm, BMJ.
He's asking for twenty-five feet.
Uh, they're, I know, I know they're asking for twenty-five feet, that being said, we can, we can offer the shortest, or we can offer the minimum variance necessary to relieve them.
And then have them allow parking, is that what you're saying?
That, yes, that would allow parking, or that would...
You really want, you really think that that's safe to have parking on a condominium street?
Pardon?
Oh, my goodness.
It's, studies show that parking on the side of roads actually reduces the speed of traffic because it makes drivers feel less safe, which makes them not speed.
I don't think that we should stipulate what it should be. If they're gonna redraw the plans for on-street parking, then they should come and tell us what they're asking for.
That would be probably...
Because it says fifty-six feet, then I would think this should go back to planning and they should come up with a...
So you would, you would ask that, you would ask that we deny it?
What's the roads in Talalawar, they're twenty?
I think we are going to vote on this variance, I don't think we can...
Well, there's a motion with no second right now, so that's gotta be resolved.
Let's just vote on this.
If, if nobody seconds my motion, I will, I will rescind my, my motion for consideration.
We could vote on...
I, I rescind my motion for consideration.
We have a vote?
We do not currently.
No, but it, fifty-six feet is not doable.
I don't think we should set the, you know, standard.
But don't set the standard, it has to go back to council and engineering, that's in our wheelhouse.
So, are...
Can we propose a recommendation?
We're gonna ask that zoning and, or council and the planning commission?
Yes.
I mean, we could vote on it.
We would still have to vote on it, yes.
Let's, let's have a vote then.
All right, well, I...
With the recommendation that it goes to council and engineering.
It's hard to vote.
Yeah.
No, no.
You gotta vote on the variance.
We gotta vote on the variance.
I, I motion to vote on statewide Memphis LLC's variance request for section one fifty-one point five-five E, which requires a road width of fifty-six feet and they would like a variance of twenty-five.
The variance two twenty-five.
Two, variance two twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Yes.
There's a second, yeah.
Mazur?
Whether the denial, whether denying the variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the code as written is unnecessarily burdensome?
Yes.
Whether granting a variance is substantial justice to the owner?
Yes.
Whether the request for a variance is due to the self-created conditions or difficulties caused by statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
Powers?
Whether denying the variance would deprive an owner of use of the property?
No.
Would compliance with the ordinance as written be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Is granting a variance substantial justice to the owner?
What was that again?
Is granting a variance substantial justice to the owner? Whether the request for a variance is caused by the self-created conditions caused by statewide?
Yes.
Is your vote to approve or deny?
Okay, I found this on the web.
I'm sorry, was it to deny?
Was it to deny?
Yeah, okay, just kidding.
Go ahead.
Whether denying the variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Is compliance with the ordinance as written unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
Yes.
Whether the request for a variance is caused by the self-created conditions or difficulties caused by statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
Henley?
Whether denying the variance deprives the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance is unnecessarily burdensome?
Yes.
Whether granting a variance would do substantial justice to the owner?
Yes.
And is the request for a variance caused by the self-created conditions or difficulties of statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Approve.
Garber?
Whether denying the variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the ordinance is unnecessarily burdensome?
Yes.
Whether granting a variance is substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Whether the request for a variance is caused by the self-created conditions or difficulties of statewide?
No.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Approve.
Dunbar?
Whether denying the variance deprives the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance would be unnecessarily burdensome?
No.
Whether granting a variance is substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Is the request for a variance caused by the self-created conditions or difficulties of statewide?
Yes.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
Whether denying the variance would deprive the owner of use of the property?
No.
Whether compliance with the ordinance is unnecessarily burdensome?
Yes.
Whether granting a variance is substantial justice to the owner?
No.
Is the request for a variance caused by the self-created conditions or difficulties of statewide?
No.
Your vote is to approve or deny?
Deny.
Two approved, five denied.
So that would, that would conclude all variance requests and we would move on to, uh... So we've done that, so that we would be on time to finish business if there's no comments from commissioners. Uh, will you ask for comments from commissioners? Ask for comments from board members if they're... So you just start at the end of the table and ask all right?
Kevin, do you have anything you would like to say?
Can we make a motion to send fifty-six feet ordinance back to planning to re, to change it?
I don't think that's a motion. I, I don't think that's a motion necessary, I can bring it up to city council at the next, uh, at the next meeting.
They obviously had to re印 print, and then we had to go through the process.
I have nothing.
Okay, so you have, have anything to say, pardon? So, do you have anything you want to say?
You know, I got something I'd like to say. You know, I sat here doing all this thing for voting, and I've read this, and read this, and read this. It seems to me that whoever approved that the first time, whether it was the builder or the city council, I don't know, but it left the understanding with me is that this was supposed to be one project, and then they slipped another, they changed it after, I think it was a year, and then they started another one, and they boost the, they boost the units up in it. Now that tells me that something's not right, and so I, that's, just wanted to give you how I, how I feel.
That's not true, sir, the law's always showed phase one, phase two, and it always showed 68, that's always, day one.
That's all your word against mine.
Well, you have the documents, sir, I, I don't, we turn it all around.
Respectfully, no, no public participation at this moment.
Right.
I know I, yeah, all right, second. Second, one favor.
All right.